All right. Good evening. I'm Christine Horn, superintendent, and I am going to call the Weathersfield April 16th meeting to order at 6:30 PM. And we're going to start first with a moment of silence in honor of Chief Darren Spalding, who passed away unexpectedly this past week. So we'll just take a moment of silence. Okay, I know our thoughts are with family and friends of Spaldings. And I think it's okay to announce the services this Saturday here at the school at 11:00 AM. So all are welcome. Okay, we're going to start with reorganization tonight. And I am going to take nominations for the chairperson.
May I move Ann Marie Redmond for chair?
Ann Marie, do you accept?
Yes.
Are there any other nominations? All right, then we'll vote on Ann Marie as chairperson of the Weathersfield School Board. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Sorry, Sarah. All right, and then I will turn the meeting over to Ann Marie.
Okay. All right, thank you, everybody. Up next, we have the nomination for vice chairperson. And I would like to nominate Mark. Do you vote for him? Are there any other nominations? All right, I will take a vote. All in favor of Mark being the vice chair, say aye.
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 Becky, if you're online. Just so you know, Sarah can't vote today. She's not yet sworn in. So that's why we only have four of them. See, up next, we have the nomination and election of three WSC SU representatives. I need to be one of them as vice chair. So we have two other positions available. I would like to nominate Sarah for one of those positions. But I believe we have to hold off on voting on her if we all agree.
She accepts.
Except, I accept. Okay. And I'd also like to nominate Mark. Do you vote?
I do.
Are there any other nominations for SU Board? Okay, so right now, we're going to vote on Mark and I, and we will have a special meeting to vote on Sarah on a later date. So we're voting on Mark and I for our SU, our WSC SU representatives. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Right, and that's unanimous? Or do you call it unanimous?
Sure.
Okay. Up next, we have the nomination for representative to the SU Bargaining Council. And is this?
This is...
Is that for teachers and for staff?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
For negotiations.
So we usually... So right now, Vincent, is it because we're negotiating staff?
Correct.
Would we... I mean, we're negotiating teachers right now. And so next year would be negotiating staff. So we can nominate Vincent for that position.
Do you think I can?
Oh.
Not sure.
It will... What did I do?
You don't think you can?
I don't know if I can.
Or you mean legally?
Yes.
Oh, correct. That is correct. Thank you, Vincent. For my...
I can't either.
You can't either? Okay, so we are limited in our choices.
Mark, you can, because it's a different agreement.
Oh, okay.
So for support staff, you could.
Okay, can we stick with the position that I can't?
They will, the support staff will start in the fall, likely. Yeah.
Okay.
And teachers will hopefully be done by the end of the school year.
Okay.
Do either of our other two members have family?
No. I mean, I can do it if you guys don't want to. But if you want to, let me know.
It's really fun.
It's really exciting. Do either of you have an interest in a couple hours monthly, right?
Yeah.
Couple hours a month, then it's usually over Zoom, right? Or is it...
It's a hybrid.
Hybrid.
Typically, yeah, so you can come remotely. We've taken an extra, some extra time on the teacher contracts. We're fixing some things that have been needing fixing for a while. So it wouldn't normally take this long.
Yep. You don't have to. If that's maybe wanted.
Yeah.
That's the end.
All right, so what do you want to nominate? Who do you want to nominate?
I nominate Ann Marie for SU Bargaining Council.
Okay.
Okay.
Accept. All in favor, say aye. Aye. And that's unanimous. We need to designate a truant officer. And we usually designate Chief Daniels. Is everybody good with that? Okay. Do we need to vote on that?
You do.
Okay. So all in favor of having Chief Daniels as our truant officer? Say aye. Aye. We need to designate official newspapers. And I guess we usually do the Valley News and Eagle Times. So I'll make a motion for the Valley News and Eagle Times.
Does anybody else have any other suggestions for local publications?
Yeah, sometimes we thought about maybe adding, like, online. But I don't know. Do we do anything with Shopper? No, not usually. Shopper, I was putting everybody's name on it.
No.
Yeah.
Us and the other districts use the Vermont Standard.
The Vermont Standard?
Yeah.
We can always add as we go along.
Does it cost, did it charge money for it? Or is it...
Often.
It's often just... Okay, yeah. I think just...
He was trying to make sure there wasn't...
So I'll make a motion for the Valley News and Eagle Times to be our official newspapers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We need to establish a regular time, place, and date of the monthly meeting. Is everybody okay with our usual? It's the second Tuesday at 6:30. We're at the school hybrid.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for the second Tuesday of the month at 6:30 hybrid at the school in our line. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oh, and actually, we need to adopt the Robert's Rules for small boys. Actually, we've been using them. So it's basically Robert's Rules, except for a little relaxed. And you only need one motion. You don't need a second. Good. It's just easier for small boys to work that way. Is everybody in favor of adopting the Robert's Rules for small boys? Make a motion. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that passes as well. Oh, also, I almost forgot. We need to elect someone for the select board liaison. Vincent, are you interested in continuing that session? Okay. All right, I will nominate Vincent for the select board liaison. All in favor, say aye. Aye. And that's unanimous. Is that everything?
That's everything.
Okay. All right, clerk. But I don't know who or whatever, because it's not in the topic. Did I skip clerk though? It's not on here.
It's not on there.
Okay, clerk. So Vincent has been doing clerk. And you write a line instead? Okay. All right, I will nominate Vincent for clerk. Any other nominations?
So we may want to hold that vote until we warn that.
Because it's not on the agenda. Oh, because it's not on the agenda.
So we can do that at the special meeting?
Okay, so we'll add that to the special meeting. Should we do the select board liaison then? Or is that not...
Yeah, because that's a special thing, right?
Okay, all right, so we'll vote those. And is Sarah at a meeting?
SU. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, sorry about that, Vincent. I didn't notice that wasn't on there. Okay, are there any changes or additions to the agenda? There are none, I'll move on to the approval of the minutes from the March 12th meeting. I actually didn't have a chance to read these, I'm sorry. Anybody else who can help? If not, we can postpone it. Okay, I'm going to postpone that.
The meeting for the minutes, okay.
Is there any public participation? Any online?
No.
Representative John Arson is on, and he has raised his hand.
Okay. John, Representative John Arson.
Okay, I'll fit this in wherever. I want to talk about the yield bill a little bit. Does it fit in now or not?
Now's good.
Okay.
I mean, it's all right. Yep, go ahead.
Okay, the all-important yield bill voted out of committee today. Be on the notice calendar tomorrow and voted on Thursday. I anticipate a robust debate. Just an FYI, I think you should be aware that the money part of it has to be voted out before we can leave Montpelier. So that and all the other money bills, we have to complete that work, period. And the numbers are a little bit better than we're advertising on December, but they're still not great. 9,846 for property versus 15,443 last year. And then income sensitivity, 10,060 versus 17,537 last year. But the component of that that's a little bit misleading is that your equalized pupils is a lot higher. So I'm sure Ed will do the math, and then you'll have a better idea of exactly the impact. I think we all knew that the numbers wouldn't be great. But when you figure in how many more students you're accounting for at that price or that yield number, it's a little bit better than we anticipated. As far as the language in the yield bill, I've talked to several different people. Some people are totally opposed to the whole concept that's been presented. My concern is, or one of my concerns is that this, it was put together rather hastily, under pressure. The composition of the members, I'm not particularly excited about. And when you put something together in haste, it tends to be prone to mistakes. I still get an open mind on whether or not to support the bill. I know that there's been talk from many school districts. I think it's coming from the Superintendent's Association and that it's not great. I anticipate the... Let's put it this way, we're starting at 9:30, which is three hours earlier than usual on Thursday, because I think they anticipate an endless barrage of amendments. So I think we'll know a lot better on Thursday afternoon how that bill is going to come out. And of course, then it still goes over to the Senate. It's still prone to more changes. So all I can say is sit tight, crunch the numbers that you got. And there's still school districts that don't have approved budgets. Springfield was voted today. I have no idea how it came out. One other thing that I'm researching, and maybe Christine can give a definitive answer, but the high school tuition. I've heard people, I've heard numerous people have said you can question and ask for support. The schools should support their number. I've also heard that you pay what they tell you, and then at the end of the year, you get some money back. I don't know which is true. I've been told that they quite often will pad their numbers significantly. Anyway, before I leave here in May, I want to know the answer to that definitively, exactly how it works since we're ascending town. Any questions? That's about it.
Nope. There are any questions? No, we don't have any questions, John. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're letting us know. Okay. Now we have student presentation of learning? No, not this week?
Yep.
Okay. Administrative report.
All right, thank you very much. So our administrative report for this month. First off, I'd like to thank our Weathersfield community for passing our budget. Thank you very much. Then, I'll lead off with Jamie. She's ready to go.
I'm ready to go. Keep it relatively brief. Thank you for having me. I'm Jamie Richardson. So I don't know that we officially met, but you know, we share the same name. Not related, but we're kindred in that way, I think, already. So I'm currently the PTO president. And so first, I want to thank Carrie for taking over for me last month and really talking about the earlier quarters' worth of the work that we had done as we went through the winters. So thank you, Carrie, for taking that heavy load for us. We have a couple of big things that just... We just held our March Madness Calendar Raffle. Awesome success again this year. We had our adult comedy show. Hilarious Night held at the Common Man. Wonderful event for us. And we're looking forward to doing that again next year. It's testing season for our kiddos. And so we always deploy testing kits for our students and staff and just kind of helps them get through those difficult hours of the day when they need a little fidget or they need a piece of gum or something. So we have them, those are deployed. And so they'll be used all throughout the testing season. It's not that it's a season. I'm sorry to all of you who have to do it. But we're doing our best to try and support our kiddos and our staff. Something that's huge, that we're so excited we talked about, is our digital sign that we have had wonderful financial support from our community, as well as an enormous grant-funded part of that project. And if all goes right in the world, that sign will be delivered tomorrow at some point. I can't believe that that's almost happening. So don't get too excited. It won't be flashing on Thursday. But it will be safely stored until we can install it sometime in the next couple of months. So our goal is to have that ready by the beginning of school next year. If it happens before that, that's great. But either way, it's, the time is, you know, less than 24 hours potentially away from it arriving here on school ground. So we're so excited to deploy that project. Just before this meeting, some of you saw, we were having our annual calendar meetings. We're already planning for next year. We do a lot of things every single month, and it's good for us to get a year's head start on some of that planning and to put our budget together. Because we come in August to present to all of you for approval of our calendar. And we just want to make sure that we have a good plan and a robust schedule. So we're pretty excited about what we have planned for next year. We have things like Staff Appreciation Week, which is coming in early May. It's one of our favorite events that we do for our school. We decorate, and there's lots of food, and lots of support, and you know, lots of food and coffee and things of that nature. So I'm motivated by food. So that's where I chime in. But anyway, so we also have our Spring of Peril Sale, which ends tomorrow. So if you need swag, everywhere online, if you need Weathersfield gear, make sure that you take a peek at that and get that ordered tonight, or at least by the end of the day tomorrow. We are going to have our Spring Booster Booths here for our baseball games. Those games tend to be the most popular and appreciated for us to sling hot hogs and popcorn. So we are going to be here for those home games, weather permitting. We won't just stand in the rain. So hopefully, we have a wonderful spring baseball, softball season. And just because I think it's good to put it on the calendar, we do have our date for paw drop. We may have already told you, but that is going to be Friday, September 20th, if you approve our calendar for next year. If you want to approve that date now, you can. Yeah, I think they... Did they already approve it? Oh, see, Carrie's really holding it down. She takes on so much work. She really opens up my memory, Ben, too. So I feel, Carrie organized. She really is. She really, really is. So lots of things still going on as we wind down the year. We're participating in Field Day and, like you said, Staff Appreciation. We have some yard signs for our graduating eighth graders that we're doing as an offer. It's kind of like those senior signs that you see around. Graduating seniors, we're doing it for the eighth graders. We think that's a nice way to celebrate those kiddos. So families will be able to order a yard sign and stake it in their yard and proudly represent their graduating eighth graders. So information about that will be coming out probably in the end of the week if we can. So just a great end of our year. I definitely were talking about the end of the year, but we're also talking about next year. So I think that's the highlights of what we've got going on now. We just want to thank you all for your support. And be looking for that nice fancy sign as soon as we possibly can. So thanks.
Thank you, Jamie. All right. Carrie, you're up.
So final numbers for the spring athletic season. Track and field has 26 athletes, which is a continuously growing number. That is fantastic. We have a new coach coming on this year. Sean, and I'm not sure how to say it, if it's Messner or Meisner. He is an independently successful running coach. So he trains big-time athletes across the country. And he lives in Perkinsville and is wanting to devote some time to the UCU. So the McNattens, Marina, and Nate logically will be moving on as their daughter will be graduating eighth grade this year. So it's a way, along with Mr. Santangelo and Alex Gleason, to continue the track program and hopefully across country as well. There is sadly only one softball team, and it is seventh and eighth grade, and there are 16 athletes. And that's a great team. Baseball has well over 70 athletes. And that is not, we don't have a seventh and eighth grade baseball team. So that's still a lot of numbers that's feeding our program. So we're in a bit of a slump this year, numbers-wise, but I think it's going to rebound nicely. Our field work is scheduled to get fully underway. John SD, the chief's husband, has volunteered to help us out with some equipment to really prepare the fields this week. And then Sunday, we will be able to finish up the spring prep. So we'll be ready to go for our first home games next week. And I think that's all I have, really. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Carrie. All right, Finn.
Hey, we're here. So first off, we have testing this week. It's testing week. We had testing here a couple weeks ago for science for the eighth grade and fifth grade. Yeah. And this week, we're doing math testing. We just had it today, and we're doing some more tomorrow. And I think it's next week that we're doing English testing. So yeah, I think that's Tuesday, Monday?
Yep.
All right. All right. And so we have, I think we're going to talk more on it later, but we have the play coming up, You and the Beast. That's coming in 10 days, I believe. The eighth-grade field trip is coming up. That's in June. We have the chance to go up to Burlington and do all sorts of fun things that day. Leadership Day, we have with just like all sorts of like great things planned and like really good presentations. We also have fundraising for the eighth-grade field trip that we have gift baskets, and we're going to have themed stuff. So there's a movie basket. It's really fun. Eighth-grade graduation is coming up on June 10th.
11.
Yeah. 11. Okay. Yeah. So eighth graders will graduate, and we will be...
That included you?
Yes. And we'll be off to high school next year. Yeah, that's... Who's mine?
Where are you going to high school?
Kimball Union, Calhoun.
I'm terrible at it.
Yeah, so Kimball Union. I'm going to high school there. It's a very nice campus. We have...
You were right. Sorry, it's due tacky. I apologize. You're right. I made a mistake.
Oh, it's due tacky.
Yeah, sorry. You're right. I was a day off. Thank you, Ben. You have a day off. It's funny.
Where could, how could people, you know, the gift baskets and stuff? How could they...
Oh, I think there should be a letter coming out soon that is going to be sent to parents. Parents can go around and gather things for this basket. There will be a list of baskets, like what baskets are. There's like a gardening one. So parents can go to like Palm D'Beau and get like sunflower seeds or something. That, so.
Thank you, Ben. Appreciate it. All right, so like Finn mentioned, we do have a play coming up and students are rehearsing, and the show is coming together quite nicely. So we appreciate all of the hard work. It is an incredible undertaking for everybody that is involved. And when you set the bar up here, you have to keep it up here or higher. So we are, you know, we set it pretty high last year. So I know they're working diligently and working hard on it. I know the kids. My daughter came home today and said, yeah, rehearsal was a lot better today. So she was a little bit more calm. So she's been a little stressed out. So it's coming together, so we're excited. We are doing a preview for Heartland for their students that participated in the play that Heartland had. We went over there to be able to see them. They're coming over here on that Friday. And we're doing a preview for the school next Friday, the 26th. And then the show is Friday, the 26th, at 7:00. And Sunday, the 27th, at 2:00. And those dates are correct. Leader of means. This month, we're focusing on, have it six, center guys. So Finn mentioned Leadership Day is coming in May. We did get that approval for the early release day on May 24th. Thank you again. And so there is going to be a fun-packed day. So I'm not trying to stress people out too much between now and after testing. Then I'll stress them out with what we're going to be doing on those days for Leadership Day. But it's an opportunity for kids to really showcase what we've done here at school. We're starting off the morning with an assembly where they're showing off the arts and then having an art show and then opportunities to go and visit some of the classrooms and see some of the things the kids have done. So it's really sort of the showcase of a year. And then it gives the chance for the staff afterwards by having students do a picnic lunch and go home with their families. Then it gives our staff an opportunity to come back and talk about what went well and how we can improve on it for the following year. So it's a really awesome opportunity to showcase.
What's the date again for that?
May 24th. And it's from 8:00 to 12:00-ish, 8:30. For the parents, it's like everyone getting parents will have an opportunity to go get coffee and come back. Coffee is good. And I'll give anybody my orders. Student-led conferences. So students and staff participated, and parents, obviously, participated in the student-led conferences during the week of March 25th to 29th. So there was a feedback form for families to be able to give some feedback. We had 22 families that did fill out that form. That was a district-wide form. And the three, the, it, it was mixed reviews. So some people really loved them. Other people thought it would be nice to have a hybrid model of a little bit of both in between. And other people said, no, we just want to go back to regular conferences. So it gives us some really good valuable information to be able to look at and be able to determine what we want to do next year, how we can improve on it, what we can do. So some parents gave some great suggestions too about maybe doing part of the student led conferences during the showcase type opportunity. So we'll see what we can do with that. And I always appreciate that feedback, so was able to get that and look over it. So I'll share that a little bit more with staff and see what the plan is for next year. Anytime you try something new, there's going to be some bumps in the road before you get it smoothly. Like Finn mentioned, we did start VT cap last, the week before we started to one on break. So that was for fifth and eighth grade for science. This week for math is grades three through eight. And then next week is English, I was ours, grades three through eight. We should all be done by April 26th, have it all wrapped up nice and above and be done with it. And then testing season will be over. But we do have a few more days after that for makeups for students that were unable to make it. We just had a couple today that weren't here at school, so we'll get those makeups done because technically we have until May the 3rd to get those done. But I'd like to get them done before that and I'm sure Mrs. Hugman would too. All right, safety drills. We did do our fire drill last month and our fire drill was really great for the kids because they're in the usual spot. And we just sort of let them see what they would do. And it was a, it was a certain grade level that came out first. And there was a big mound of snow because we actually had snow. Remember that white stuff that we get sometimes? And there was a big mound of snow where everybody stopped. So the kids who were leaving sort of stopped for a second and hesitated. And then they're like, oh, and then they walked further down the parking lot into a clearing and were able to get the entire school further from the building. So it was great to be able to see kids thinking in the moment, being able to do exactly what we want them to do and do it pretty flawlessly. So I loved it, I thought it was great. Kindergarten registration, we had that the Friday before. We went on spring break, so April 5th. Great job team on doing that. It's a lot of work for our kindergarten staff and everybody else who's involved. But it's an awesome day to be able to meet the new kindergarteners and also meet the families and get a lot of information. And also try to get parents, pumping up PTO quite a bit and trying to get more parents volunteers for PTO. So we have a lot of kindergarten parents that are going to reach out to you, Jamie. We have 23 incoming kindergarten students on the books right now. 18 of those families attended and the other ones we have been in contact with. Every one of them didn't make it there, but excited to have our young campers in the building. And then we will be having, May 14th, we'll have Panther Cub Night where they get to come in and visit the school as well. Solar eclipse. You had the opportunity, something, you know, happened sort of major last Monday with the solar eclipse. It was pretty awesome. I ended up staying here in Weatherfield, so I went out to the Proctor Library, had set up this at Perkinsville School. So I saw some of our students that were safely watching the solar eclipse with their solar glasses. So I was honestly sort of like, ah, ah, like, do I really want to go? But we had friends that had come from California and they're like, well, Vermont's one of the best places to see it at. And as we drove Saturday, we were heading up to Broner's Dairy. We knew that like everybody was driving up there, so I don't know if everybody else went up there. But we were just up there for a day trip and came back. But then we went on Monday and it was pretty amazing. Like they had telescopes out there just to be able to see in the darkness and sort of the chill that came over you. It was a little freaky and I guess if people were talking about how their animals freaked out a little bit. But it was great to see our students there and thank you again to the Proctor Library for providing all that stuff out there so that people could see it safely. Because I wasn't sure if we'd be able to see it, I did not have solar classes. All right, enrollment for FY '24. So this is our attendance for the month. So we had an overall attendance, this was from March 13th through March, or through April 16th through today, so 18 Saturdays. So we had an average daily attendance of 93.66%. Our highest grade level was eighth grade again. Our eighth graders really love to come to school. They really love it. So they had 96.41%. So we'll just focus on how high eighth grade level was, great. Hiring update, so we are still looking for that Spanish or foreign language teacher for this year, even though it's on the books for next year. Part of our contract agreement was to make sure that we were looking for that. And then we did post positions today for our elementary positions that are open. So anybody wants to teach elementary school? Upcoming events, testing on there. We have our pride assembly next Friday, right before we do Beauty and the Beast. So next Friday is a really busy day here because we have pride assembly. We have the preview and then Beauty and the Beast that night. May 1st is an early release day for all students across the SU. Mark, May 14th is Panther Cub Night and then May 24th is our Leadership Day slash early release day for students. And that is it for May. I'm going to turn it over to.
Right, thank you, Brian. As always, my report, my full report is linked, so you're, you're welcome to take a look at it. I'm just going to share a few highlights and it doesn't work when I. As I have done all year, I'm reporting out on the previous month's question of the month results. And next month I'll bring back some of the student led conference data. That was, that was the question of the month for this year. But for March, it was what, what are you proud of about your school? And I was really touched by some of the things that I read from, from our community members and parents and caregivers. And it was mainly the, the, the feedback was incredibly positive about our staff and how, how much they care and how hard they work. And so it was just really, and I know that to be true, so it was very, it was great for me to read. But I think it's worth me just sharing a couple of the bullets. Bold staff who take risks to do the right thing for kids. The community events were also mentioned frequently. The focus on community belonging and the outdoors. Amazing teachers that love our students and strive to see them succeed at any goal they want to accomplish. Response times from leadership looking into student concerns raised. Also general communication with teachers about my kids respectively from their grades. The sense of community uplifting our student athletes, the close community, the way everyone knows everyone. I like that you can't be anonymous in the schools. It feels, it feels really, it feels really for our kids to have connections and relationships that span the school. And clear support and love for the students and their learning. So the, the results were very, very positive, which was nice to hear. We're doing some things right. Still work to do, but we're doing, doing a lot right. The other big thing we've been working on lately, and I've talked about this at the SU level meeting. We're trying to create really some strong, robust hiring practices that are inclusive. So there is a team that meets pretty regularly and it is made up of Larry Dower, our Director of Finance and Operations, myself, Tracy Price, our Coordinator of Diversity, Equity and Inclusion, and Tina Canfield, our HR Director. And we really just tried to bring consistency across the SU in terms of what the practices look like, what the interview questions are, what the look fours are for those interview questions, what the reference questions are. It's really just to take as much bias out of the process as we can and make the best hires possible. So there's a document link that you're welcome to look at. It gives you more information on the practices we've been working on. It'll, it's going to take us a while, but we've, we've made a good, good headway on it. Next month's question, as I shared, is, is about student led conference caregiver feedback. We did survey the staff as well, so it'll be interesting to hear their feedback on how those went. And then accordingly, financials are attached. They are, let me just, if you click on that, Brian, it'll open, I think. They're in the portal as well. Just click right there. No?
No, I have to be.
Oh, in a different tab, sorry. I can, I can. Well, he's on a different tab, I think. So they are, I spoke to Larry today. Total revenues are, hold on, let me just look at this. Year to date revenues are $5,316,248. And total expenditures are $6,355,434. That's a 19.5% difference and that is because all the projected revenue has not come in yet. So he said there's nothing to be worried about in terms of the financials this month, for this quarter. And I do believe the next part is, goes to Angie. She's going to talk a little bit about.
Following up on my, on my report last month. So last time I talked about our next actions, developing final quarter lesson guidance. Our plans for summer scope review for ELA and math. And then gathering a priority feedback, completing program requirements and supporting struggling students were the two main issues that we have come to our attention. So next slide, please. So developing final quarter lesson guidance. We have shared out Eureka squared lesson guidance with third and fourth grade level teachers and we are working on fifth grade. And the CKLA lesson guidance is going out in the April newsletters. And then we encourage teachers to reach out to the CIA, CIA team if there are any questions. You can hit the return, did that third button?
Didn't. That's okay.
That's okay. And continuing that, we have a curriculum, we have a, Patty had a curriculum meeting with a third grade team here in the building and that was offered to other grade levels. The next slide is about our summer scope review as part of our ELA work that we have received a grant through, that's an ARPESR funds. The ARPESR funds were given for recovery and they expire in September. And so we applied for a grant to help us do that work and that we will be getting more information out to teachers soon. And gathering priority feedback. We have the May 1st early release day that we are planning to discuss CKLA and Eureka squared implementation. We're collaborating, collaborating with the instructional coaches and the interventionists to make sure that we are using that time to meet our teachers' needs. And once again, this is our, our contact information for Patty and I. Please reach out, can I have any questions?
All right, thank you, Anne.
You're welcome.
And that is it for, I'm going to turn the report.
Does anyone have any questions or comments from the administrative side? Right. We move on to items for discussion. First, we have the budget, which. We're all very happy about that. We're one of the lucky, more, more lucky ones. I'm going to actually, I'm going to leave special ed follow up for last because we're probably going to have to include that with executive session a bit. So, so let's do drama follow up. No, we don't need, we already went over the drama follow up date, which is that there's going to be Beauty and the Beast Junior here, April 26th and 27th, 7:00 PM on the 26th and 7:00 PM on the 27th. So I just, I'm thinking that in every meeting, I'm going to kind of go over just one of our policies or something like that. And the first one that I wanted to do was public participation. Which I don't know if you all have a copy of this. We don't, we won't have it in front of you right now. You might've gotten one last year. Maybe this I had, just something that I have. But if anybody wants one, we can make copies. It's the SU's policy on public participation in meetings. And the policy is, is that it's the policy of the Windsor Southeast Supervised Reunion Board and its member districts, Heartland, Manistette and Weatherfield to engage in public participation at its meetings. Background, public participation is very important to the successful function of the Windsor Southeast Supervised Reunion Board. The board wants to carry out its business with the benefit of public input and expertise. It also wants to keep the public informed and up to date on what is happening in the community schools. That side, public participation is not a public debate or forum. It is a period during which members of the public may voice concerns to their board members and have them heard. Remediation may follow as appropriate, but not at the time of the comments. Further, it is a transgression of the law for individuals to preclude the board from exercising the conduct of a public meeting. Implementation, reasonable rules of participation may be used to ensure that meetings are conducted in an orderly fashion and that the business at hand is completed in a timely manner. Such rules may take into consideration such things as length of each speaker's presentation and the number of times each speaker may comment. Persons who may address the board, any district resident, school staff members, students and parents, individuals who have been requested by the superintendent or the board to be present on a given subject, persons who are directly affected by matters on the board agenda and/or others at the discretion of the board. Public comment on agenda items, the chair will ask for comments on the agenda items before action is taken by the board. When, when the number of people wishing to speak is large, the board may authorize the chair to use the speaker's list. Members of the public will be given an opportunity to sign the speaker's list indicating which agenda item will be addressed. We've never had that. Want to speak, but it's the damn policy about it, just in case. So public input on items not on the agenda. There will be time set aside for public input on items not on the agenda at every regular, special or emergency meeting of the board. The time allotted for this item will be assigned by the chair or the person responsible for organizing the agenda. The chair shall rule out or order any presentation to the board which breaches the privacy or other rights of students, parents or school employees or which does not comply with the board policy on complaints. Participants are not allowed to cede remaining time to other participants. If a participant's comments exceed the allotted time, allotted time, they may submit their full or remaining comments to the board in writing. Written comments may not necessarily become part of the public record. Every posted agenda will include instructions on submitting written comments to the board. The board will not comment on public participation except to intercede on a declaration of clearly untrue facts or if the matter may be addressed by an existing policy. If a matter requires follow up, the board may add it as a future agenda item or may seek clarification or answer from the administration. The board chair has the responsibility and the right to impose consequences. Language not tolerated, obscenity, defamation, threats, none of which are protected by the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. The board may vote to extend public comment period. The board will start every public comment section by sharing purpose and expectations and the consequences of violation. If infraction continues, the chair may call for a brief recess or inform the speaker that their opportunity to provide comment has ended or failure to follow policy. If necessary, the chair may call for removal from the podium or meeting, but not because of a disagreement with the substance of the comments. The chair may close public comment portion of the meeting, may pause the meeting, or the board may end the meeting. So that, that's in general our policy on public comments. Okay, so now we'll move back to the special ed follow up and I believe Christine has.
Yep, I know there have been some questions relating to the two support staff positions that were locally funded at Weatherfield that were cut when we had to rescind the budget. And how those positions could become special ed positions. So I just, I asked Katie to start with, and she always does this at the beginning of the year. She has to for budget, budgeting purposes, figure out the needs of all the kids in the SU. But I asked her to do it for, for just Weatherfield. And we're not going to go into great detail because we don't want to break any confidentiality rules. So we won't get specific by classroom, but overview of the school. So at this point in time in this, I just want everybody to know that this is always an ebb and flow. There are kids that move in, there are kids that move out, there are kids that have IEP reviews and the services change. So it's always an ebb and flow. The numbers are always an ebb and flow. But currently, the need is, the need is for 5.2 FTE positions for one-on-one support for students in this building. And there is a need for six FTEs for small group supports according to the IP minutes. And that's a total of 11.2 FTEs. Actual numbers here in the building are at this point 12.2 SU-funded FTEs, which is a little more than necessary. But when the needs change, we don't like to let people go. We hold on to them as best we can and sometimes have to shuffle. And if I'm blocking this, Katie, feel free to speak up. So Weatherfield, as you know, currently has four locally funded support staff members. That will be two in next year's budget. And it, it's come up a lot. So I just wanted to reiterate that some of the SU-funded positions, support staff positions are in classrooms and they are supporting both special, special needs students, special education students and non-special education students. And vice versa is true. So that we're, we're here for all kids. All of us are here for all kids. So there is crossover. So we, when we started talking about the opportunity for staff members to apply for SU support staff positions, I went to Tina Canfield in HR and Katie as well. And we have not been fully staffed in support staff positions in this SU in three years, which is not a good thing. As of, I think, last week or two weeks ago.
At the end of last week, yes.
We, we are fully staffed. We had some applicants and, and hired them. So at this time, the, what we have to do is we have to post the positions at the SU level because the SU is a different employer, a different entity. So we legally have to post, post jobs to, to hire anybody from any other district within the SU. Currently, we've offered contracts across the SU and support staff members have until April 30th to return those contracts. We are optimistic that there will be people that are not returning. There, in the past, that's always been the case. People, people go elsewhere, people elevate in their careers, become teachers and leave positions open. And so we, we anticipate that, we're optimistic about that. But as I said before, there's no guarantee and I know that's not what people want to hear. And we do have to follow this process. And so we're very, very optimistic that we will have positions. But it's just like, right now, we're in a waiting game until those contracts are returned. We know what, what, what we have open and what we don't. So I'm happy to take questions. I just want to be very careful that I'm not breaking any confidentiality, that's all. And Katie is here to answer any questions. Did you want to add anything?
No, you had it covered. Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions?
Uh, I have a couple. So if the positions are filled at the SU level, then what does that mean for here at Weatherfield? Because I'm specifically interested in making sure we have full coverage here.
Here in Weatherfield.
So as, so you say as of last week, positions were filled, but where is, where is the support staff? Because I know that we are short, so.
So I'll, I'll just say, and I know Katie can chime in, according to when she did the math of all the people, of all the special ed minutes required by IEP. the math of all the people, of all the special ed minutes required by IEPs, and the number of minutes based on the staff members in the building, Weathersfield is currently not understaffed in special ed. They're overstaffed by one full-time FTE. I think there have been, there have been times when services have not been able to be delivered, because staff have been absent from the building, and we don't have subs to cover those absences. But I will divert to Katie if I'm speaking incorrectly.
So, that directive on what is on IEPs is, we are fully staffed for within the SU, and that includes here. So, the, the use of staff, some staff are in classrooms possibly longer than what might be on an IEP, and we're looking at that too, to make sure that if we have minutes that we're missing elsewhere, that those minutes are covered for students. I think that's part of that ebb and flow that happens with students on a daily basis. So, according to what we have, we, we do have the staff members. Sometimes we have to relook at how they're allocated, and we take an opportunity to do that pretty frequently.
More questions?
I just disagree, but I'm waiting to hear more, I guess. Yeah, I, I just, I don't see that, so I, I disagree, but I will continue to look into it. Okay.
I do have a couple of comments on this subject too. It's centered more around, I think, the operation of this Board, and maybe how things are presented to us. Clearly, and we had a discussion about these cuts, I'm not looking to change what's already been done, but I'm looking to shed light on the fact that I felt like we were supporting these paras that are being cut from our budget, being absorbed to the SU. We were supporting them in, I, I sort of felt like we, that they were going to be offered jobs, like that they weren't going to go through a process. So I think that the ethics of the situation should come into question for this Board, because I, for one, I'm not sure how anyone else feels on this Board, but I, for one, may have second guessed my vote if I knew things were going to go this way. Any questions on that?
I mean, I agree, I brought it up on two separate meetings, that I was not okay with the paras being cut. I did realize that it did give us almost $100,000, which I questioned at the town meeting, but I just, it was reiterated over and over that they could reapply at the SU level, we have all these positions, and now I'm hearing they're full, but I also know that that's not always the case. So, there's just a lot of gray area, and it doesn't feel good.
Yeah, I get that, and I apologize if that was conveyed on my part, that certainly wasn't an intent of mine. We have been understaffed for three years, and we anticipate openings. So, when that was said, that was an honest, that was an honest statement.
It was a misleading situation, I think that's the term, that we're thinking of, or at least I'm thinking of, is that it felt like a misleading situation. It felt like, like a physical, like this is going to be, you know, oh, it's going to work out, they're going to, they're going to get hired at the SU, let's get them in there now, you know, I mean, we can, we can watch the meetings and get that sense, and my comment is, that should not be happening at this meeting. If you don't have a plan, don't talk about it like that. You know, it's, it's, we didn't guarantee, I know you didn't guarantee that these folks would have jobs when they left here. I don't know how long they've been here, but they, I've seen them, I know them, it's been a pretty critical component of the staff here. So, yes, I understand why those cuts were made, they were necessary in the times, but I believe the Administration misled this Board on what was actually going to take place.
Can I ask, what changed about the data that led us from being understaffed to being fully staffed?
We, so we're dealing with-
And I'm sorry if you already, if you already covered that, but I just didn't catch that.
We're dealing with two different years.
Okay.
So, at the time, when we were asked, historically, we have positions open after people return contracts.
Right.
That is true.
Yep.
I, in any, any job I've been in ever, there's always, and that has been true here.
Right.
So that isn't misleading, that is historically what has happened. This year, for this fiscal year, we still had openings. We weren't talking about this year, we were talking about next year.
Right, well, we're budgeting for-
So for this year, we're budgeting for next year. This year, we had some people leave, we had a student move in, for example. That caused a domino where we, a combination of factors, where we were able to, to hire. And as of this moment today, the open positions we had are now filled. That could change tomorrow. I mean, and that is not unusual in any SU at this point, for any level staff member level. So, I, I think there's a difference between this year, yes, there were positions that are needed to fill for this year. For next year, optimistically speaking, we have always had positions open after contracts from you. So I, I, I think I want to just differentiate between what has happened this year, what we were speaking to was for next year.
I understand. So is our, is the window for applications still open?
For this year, no. We have anyone who's inquired, after I found out that the last person hired signed their contract and came in, and I wait till literally Tina sees them and gets them in to finish the last steps, because we have had people not come back to do the last steps.
So this is the same process as it is with standard education?
It is, it is no different. And, so, yes, so as of right now, and I've been as transparent as humanly possible with, with this, those positions have been filled. Anyone who was in the queue who had also applied, who I had said, you know, we're interviewing, and I've emailed them and said, our positions have been filled. I think everything's off of newsletters and everything else, because I keep the ads up until we actually get somebody in, in the, in the building. So, that's, and that is the first time, we haven't been having a running ad all, actually for several years. For next year, no ads have been put out for next year. I have no idea until, as Christine explained, and we don't for any education position, teacher, parent, professional, until contracts are returned, we do a little reminder, did you forget? And then we'll have, for support staff positions, the way the squad chart reads, we have to internally post for five days. Internally, we can take those people and then follow our process, and we don't have to go external if we have individuals internally. And that's the process according to the squad staff master agreement. So there's, there is that as well, that we're making sure we're following and checking with Tina along the way to make sure that we're honoring our agreements that way.
So if those positions stay full based off of, so right now, you say you're full for next year?
No, we're full for this year.
For this year, okay. So what about next year? With the two-
It won't until contracts-
But say, but say the contracts all come in, and everyone's stayed on as planned, then what does that mean specifically, since we didn't budget for two?
We cut two support staff potential hires off the SU budget as well, so-
But that's not really true.
We did.
The SU?
The SU.
Yeah, I know.
Yes, but the, the SU, out of the special education budget, we had budgeted for four additional, I, we do have incoming students, but it's a, I'm going to be honest, sometimes special ed is crystal ball moment, on who's coming in. You saw incoming kindergarteners, and then there's kids who move in. So if every contract comes back, and every support staff member comes back with the kids I know about right now, with the IEP minutes I know about right now, then there would not be a position open. The likelihood of any of that happening, kids move in, kids move out, IEP minutes change, plans change, and staff change. The variables, there's no guarantees, but I actually can say one of the guarantees is something's going to change that will domino to affect staffing one way or the other. That's just-
And if though, if students move in or if minutes change and we have not budgeted enough positions, we still have to hire them legally. It just depends on what the, what the minute requirements are, the service requirements. So, that's-
Well, I guess that's what I'm getting at, is that if there-
There's still needs.
There's still needs by IEPs, and there's still parent professionals that are needed, what, what is the process of that? Because, and we would need, could possibly need multiple more.
We would hire, yeah. That would be the, we would advertise and hire four additional staff.
Okay. What's the process? Well, it still has to be warned in-house first for five days, so it's still the same process as it always was? Okay. When, when will we know about contracts coming back?
April 30th.
Support staff, we do a couple, Tina does do a little lurch to anybody who's not, and said, are you intending not to return it, or if you are, you'd have to, I think she usually gives 24, 48 hours, just in case. People are human, this is a wonderful place to work where that's honored. And after that, then we would know what those positions are, and then we would post them.
So there's a chance of more clarity in two weeks?
Yes.
That's what we're looking at?
Yeah, that's, that is, that is the plan.
Now, I specifically opened up my comment about the, at least myself and previous Board members and possibly other members on this Board feeling like, the discussion that we had regarding these cuts was that there's confidence that these two individuals will have a job at the SU likely returning to this school. So I want to just say that the confidence that you two, Christine and Brian, projected onto this Board and to the public at that meeting was misleading. That felt misleading to some Board members. So that was my point, was that it felt like this was a signed deal, even though you said there are no guarantees, we all heard that, I understand that. Okay, but the way things went, okay, it was misleading, and it felt like it was a confident decision. And there were sidebars that took place after this meeting that also boosted the confidence that these individuals would get what they deserved. Just want to be on record for that.
Um, I would say that, I think we owe the Administration a couple of weeks here to have, to find out, to find out.
I'm saying a comment about how I felt, and how other Board members felt.
My own opinion of the situation is that I would like to give them the time until the, till the contracts come back, because I don't feel like we need to make a judgment on them.
Well, I'm not asking for anything to be changed. I'm making a comment about how the meeting went.
And Vincent, I will apologize if that's the way it came across, that was certainly not my intent. If, if, if I sounded confident, I was confident, and I still am confident, so I didn't, it wasn't an intentional misleading, and I do apologize if that, that's the way it felt.
Okay, I just wanted to circle back. Katie, you said that there are currently 11.2 FTE needs, is that this year?
Yes.
And currently, we're at 12.2 staff FTEs?
Correct.
For this year?
Correct.
Is there an indication of how much, how many minutes are being served by the two regular ed paras that are being eliminated? Because my brain is telling me that would automatically create two openings.
That's part of the, some of the minutes that you have of special education support staff who are also supporting general education minutes. So, the, we did not go by person by person, we went by with what was on IEPs.
Yeah, no, I, I, that's, I'm just clarifying, so we're-
So by, by individuals that are funded by SU funds, looking at individuals and matching the FTEs, we would have enough individuals to, with SU-funded staff, to meet the service minutes on IEPs.
We wouldn't be short of mine.
No, we would not.
I guess, because we're ahead one right now.
By, yes, we're ahead one right now. It is how we're, it's how people's day sugar out. It's their schedule.
A head by one, but losing two puts you down one, but that's, but that's not how it works. Do you have any data of the ratio?
Can you state your name, sorry?
Christina Hughes. Do you have like data to show like how much of the special ed people are providing regular ed time, whereas the two regular eds are providing 99% special ed time?
We did not break down everybody's time studies. For example, we do those every, for two weeks per year, in part because we, when I do budgeting and when we plan for staffing, it is by IEP minutes that it's driven, not by other duties and other things going on. So, by IEP minutes, that is what we're legally obligated to do and plan for financially, the staffing is there. How it, again, comes out in everyone's schedule looks different, and with Act 173, how we're doing our funding system, that, that is allowed to have it, being locally funded staff as well as SU-funded staff. So we did not break it down by everyone's individual schedule. Because there, there are times people are in classrooms that are not on IEPs.
I know, I just don't think it's about 99% of their time, which I do know those two positions right now are 99% of the time special ed. So I just don't see how, with the numbers, you take away those two positions, like Carrie, none of the people are saying, I know it looks like we've got it there, but I don't agree that we have it in this whole system.
I think in practice, we, I said very early on, we need to look at where everybody is, and if it's not on an IEP minutes, then maybe they shouldn't be where they are. And we, and that's, but that, but that's for, for all, and then that's something that some districts have done, where we have not done that here, where we're, you only have a special ed staff person in a room for the exact minutes on that IEP, and then they have to move to another room. We've had more flexibility in our SU to balance things out, so that more students have that benefit of having an additional adult. But by minutes alone, and that's what we need to look at, that's what I was asked to look at.
My one last question is, is there ever times when students are not yet fully on an IEP with designated services, but are receiving special ed support while that process is going through?
Yeah, that, I think that happens with both support staff, special educators, interventionists. We support all kids at any stage of where they are, so that also happens, and that's absorbed within the school.
Being one full-time employee ahead on minutes with students not receiving services still isn't adding up for me. I just, that, that is a struggle for me personally, to have services not being provided when we're one full-time equivalent ahead and cut in two paras. So that, as a public comment, as a parent of children that need to receive services that they are not, this doesn't add up.
Okay, go ahead, Laura.
Does the 12.2 FTE include the two that have been cut from the budget currently? It does not.
Though, those are not the Weathersfield ones.
No, because that's, because some of this year, and this year, they're on our budget, they're not on the SU budget.
Okay, so then if, if they were to be released from their current contract, and the students that they are working with would need to have a person with them, would they be able to be hired then so through the SU as an SU employee?
Not this year's budget. We would need to look at allocating the SU-funded staff to fill those minutes.
By, by cutting those two positions, you're saying we still would have, like if Weathersfield, or if they walked out today, they're saying that those, we would still have enough people to cover all the IEP minutes?
It's, we'd have enough FTE.
To cover all of the students' IEP minutes?
Yes. And that would be reexamining where everybody is for every minute of the day, and reallocating what everybody, what every FTE, 12.2 FTE is doing in special education. and reallocating what everybody, what every FTE, 12.2 FTE is doing in special education to do that. I, it, so it's difficult. I, I know that cutting any staff is difficult, but.
Well, the most difficult part, I think, is that they were assured pretty much that they would have a job coming into next year. And I think that that is the most difficult part for all of us to take. When you have good, reliable employees, why would you not fight as hard as you possibly could to maintain and retain those employees? Just a comment.
Okay. All right, um, are there any more comments from the board? Nope. Okay, um, so do we think we need to go into executive session to discuss anymore about this matter? You guys have any questions that you think would need to be answered in executive session? I swing path one, would like to talk about the SU?
That's fine.
Portion of it? Yeah, yeah, okay. And that's contracts, um, so, uh.
Yeah, it's a, um, BSA 313 1A.
Okay. All right, um, I will take a motion, um, but let's, let's set the next agenda first before we go into executive session.
Yep.
So the next meeting is?
May 14th.
May 14th?
James, you can say that in standard government?
Oh.
So people would like to get here early?
Oh, okay.
Five to six. You can experience our new kindergarten families, that's my plan.
Okay. Yep, May 14th.
It'll be refreshing.
And well, is that, that, do we need to have a meeting a little bit later or is it 6:30 okay?
No, it goes from six, it goes from five to six.
Okay.
Gives us an opportunity to still mingle with parents and then have them-
Okay, so 6:30 PM on May 14th?
Yeah.
And that will be hybrid. Um, let's see, so what, what do we need to have on the agenda? Do we need to talk about our board retreat?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's talk about the board retreat, how we don't want to do that this year. Um.
We received an agenda for that, did you see that? It seemed random, but-
Yeah, yeah, I think it was, I think it was just, it was, yeah, I think it was just, uh, she would just come out, yeah, I don't, yeah.
Am I saying? Okay. I was like, oh, I don't remember that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that was just an errant, uh, calendar post or something.
Well, she, in our work plan, we have the retreat on June 11th, the June meeting. And she had it in the calendar at 6:30 and I said, it's going to start much earlier, so we should probably let people know.
Oh, okay.
So that's what it was, just changing it in the calendar time.
Well, we can set whatever date we want, we can figure it out.
Yep.
Um, and also if anybody has any ideas of anything they'd like to know more about, I was thinking that we should know more about reasons for going into executive session. It, the rules have changed a lot recently.
Our interpretation.
Or, yeah, so, um, so it sounds, so it seems like that might be something that would be good to, I don't know.
We've said how is we can engage in a reading of it?
Yeah, we can, we can look at the, the law, for sure.
Okay.
So, but that, that's one, but if anybody has any other ideas, please contact me with those. Um, something else that I recently did find out is that, um, only I should be emailing all the members of the board. If any of you have anything to say, you need to only email, only email me. Um, actually, I have a participant mentioned that, uh, for boards, that only the chair, only the chair is supposed to do the emails.
Yeah, and you should only be communicating about, um, like setting a time to meet or, yeah, something, yeah.
We need to cut back on our, you know, talk, um.
And you shouldn't reply to all.
Yeah, don't reply all, don't, yeah. Um, the kind of the rules of boards is, is that we can talk amongst each other one-on-one. Um, once, since we're only a board of five, once we have three people together talking about anything, that should be a board meeting.
It's open, it's under open meeting law, we could talk about that.
Yeah, let's talk about the open meeting law. Um, so, yeah, so open meeting law and, um, and also, uh, executive session.
This way is a roundtable, yeah, we, we-
Yeah. But it's, it's just, it's just something that we need to be aware of because people are watching us and we need to be more careful. I know it's, it's a, it's a small school and inside the rules, but it's, yeah, and it's, it's hard for us not to, so we're running into each other sometimes, um, yeah.
I just have a question, so like tonight you just read us the policy, is that what you're going to be just continuing to do? Are you going to adopt some different policies or just reiterate?
Just sort of like a learning opportunity for everybody.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we're not, we have not policy, but the SU will.
And these are, these are based on statute?
Oh, I know.
Yeah, I'm just wondering.
The old marine.
Yeah. Um, but yeah, so if anybody has any other things with regards to boards that they're confused about or feel like they need to know more about, um, oh, and also, um, the BSBA is having a new member academy, um, which I've already told Deborah about, it's May 6th and 15th from 5:30 to 7:00. It's webinar style. Um, so if anyone's interested in that, that will, I'm sure have a lot of great information for old and new, that's more than just, so, um, that would be a great thing. I'm, I'm going to participate in it, so, um, you always pick up little things that you don't think you know, so. Um, and, uh, let's see, anything else for the agenda?
We make sure that we have the select board liaisons on and FTEs.
Oh, well, that's going to be for our special meeting, that's for the, that's going to be with the special meeting.
Okay.
Um, yeah, we'd go, because we have to have that before the next SU board meeting, so.
Which is Monday.
Which is Monday, yeah. So you can, can you get down to Florida, please? Okay. And just let me know as soon as you do in that, or let me know, if you know what day you're planning to go, we could actually schedule a meeting for them that night. Or you can just let me know when you get some idea. Um, because I think we have, we still have to get 24 hours notice?
Uh, for a special meeting, 48.
Forty-eight.
Emergency's 44, yeah.
Okay. Okay, and so if, if Sarah lets me know tomorrow and she'll be able to get down there, we can schedule a meeting for Friday evening, okay.
Or even Monday before the SU board.
Oh, yeah, we could just, that's true, we could just meet really quickly before, yeah. Okay, that's a good idea. Um, any other items for the agenda for that?
If it's not included in Brian's report or the superintendent's report, is it, is it reasonable to ask for a number of contracts returned in the positive or negative?
Yes.
Since we'll have passed that?
Yep.
April 30th, yeah.
I can take care of that one, right?
Thank you. Just so that we can have that on public record.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. All right, everybody's good? Okay, um.
And, oh, and then we're going to, the bell donation, or dedicating the bell?
Oh, that's right, um, yeah, so that's very important. Um, next month's meeting, we're going to have a dedication of the bell to Ginger.
When in the agenda would you like that, Amber?
I think we should probably at the beginning, right? So sort of, I think she might be having some family members coming for that and we don't want to make them a thrum of a meeting. Have that up at the top.
Okay.
Okay, um, so I'd like to make a motion to enter executive session. Anyone have anything? Yeah.
Laura Powers again?
Laura Powers?
May I just ask a question? For the executive session, will there be any motions or votes that will be entered in?
No, we have to come, we have to come out of it and I, there's nothing to vote on with regards to it.
Okay, so there won't be any updates as they come out of the executive session?
No, yeah, because we can't make any contract changes or change any budgets that are already passed or anything like that, so there's nothing we can change.
Because we won't be voting, thank you.
You should say why we're going.
We're going into, we, we already did, um, but it's 313A.
313A, yep.
313A?
BSA 313 1A.
Yeah, and that's contracts.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, Sandra, for going to the second question?
I don't think I'm excited, but.
Thank you, Beth.
Yes, thanks. We have, um, can we lock our?
We can, actually, we can go into the top server.
We just need to grab our car keys and our pocketbooks and lock the door, so.
Well, actually, no, what did you guys do to win that?
We just love to grab and run.